Good evening, everybody. I wanted to welcome everyone to City Hall. Today is the City Council meeting, May 27, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Andrews if she could lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please stand if you're able to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, Madam City Clerk, if you can please take the role.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Monia Junior.
Present.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Sarah.
Present.
Councilmember Sir Manuel.
President.
Mayor Salinas.
President, thank you. Next, I have an announcement about the public hearing. Public Hearing 9. PH 25-026 is the public hearing to comply with AB 2561, Status of Vacancies, Recruitment and Retention Efforts. This item will be continued to June 3. And so, I wanted to make that announcement. Next, I'd like to ask our acting city attorney, Mike Villia, if he can give us a closed-session announcement for May 13, 2025, and May 27, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the May 13 item, it was a labor item. Council met in closed session pursuant to the Brown Act and posted notice. No reportable action was taken. For this evening's closed-session agenda, council met in closed session at 5:30. All the members were present. With respect to the conference with labor negotiators item, the council met with the labor negotiating team regarding Hayward Police Management Unit. Council gave direction to staff, but otherwise took no reportable action. I'll defer to you, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the other two items.
There was no reportable action on the other two actions. And then, May 27? No, that was May 27. Yes, okay. Yeah, because today is May 27. Hello, okay. I'll get there. I'll get there. Thank you. Next item, we have two very special presentations. Our first presentation is the Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Proclamation. And I wanted to see if I can have Councilmember Andrews hold that. And... Oh, wait, actually, no, this is the wrong one. Here, I have my notes. There you go. And then, receiving the proclamations today is Yalitza. Is Yalitza here? Now, there she is, right on time, right on cue. Yalitza Peña, she's the Hayward Unified School District Coordinator for Student and Family Services Programs, Asian Pacific Islander Community Initiative. And we also have, of course, Principal Lisa Tess. She's the principal at Winton Middle School. Glad you're back. Next, we have Nyleen Tomadong. She's an advisor for Winton Middle School Asian and Pacific Islander Club. There you are, hello. Next is Teresa Huaing. She's CEO and founder of Strong, Smart and Kind Foundation. Welcome. And we also have, of course, the Director of Library Services of the City of Hayward, Giyanti Adelman. She is at every proclamation that we have here. And then, of course, the John Pappas Humanitarian Award winner this year for the City of Hayward is Lonnie Lomito. And she is an active parent in HUSD, a parent ambassador. And, you know, when she's not doing humanitarian things, she's really being a strong leader for kids and families in the school district. So, thank you for being here, and let me go to the proclamation. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll come up, take a picture, and then you may say a few words. Proclamation. Whereas, starting in 1977, Asian Pacific Heritage Week was established and has since expanded to the month-long celebration called Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to celebrate the invaluable contributions to society, culture, and history of the AANHPI group. And whereas, the month of May is designated to recognize people from across the continent of Asia and the Pacific Islands of Malaysia, Micronesia, and Polynesia, who serve as leaders, innovators, and creators in all aspects of our society, including business, education, arts, healthcare, entertainment, and government. And whereas, the 2025 theme of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a legacy of leadership and resilience. And whereas, the City of Hayward is committed to advancing racial equity in city processes, services, and projects in a manner that is culturally responsive to the needs of Pacific Islander, Southeast Asian, Middle Eastern, and East Asian communities. And whereas, the City of Hayward Public Library is recognizing Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with exhibits and events, including large decor and display cases representing AANHPI clothing, traditional crafts, artifacts, and symbols, book displays and book lists, scavenger hunts for children and teens, and an author talk art program with Indian-American New York Times bestselling author Alka Joshi. Now, therefore, I, Mark Salinas, Mayor of the City of Hayward, and on behalf of the Hayward City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give everybody a big round of applause.
Got it. Hello, thank you. Hi, my name is Jennifer Rivera. I am the co-lead for APC along with Lonnie. I'm also a family engagement specialist at Stonebury Elementary School. And I'd like to read our mission statement for APC, for those who aren't familiar with our organization. So, HUSD's Asian and Pacific Islander Community Initiative, APC, celebrates and honors the identity, values, and cultural contributions of Hayward's diverse Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities. Through this initiative, HUSD seeks to foster pride in cultural heritage, promote cross-cultural awareness, and help preserve unique AANHPI cultural traditions for future generations to come. APC also aims to strengthen family and community engagement and unity, and create a safe, supportive school environment that understands, respects, and advocates for the academic and social-emotional needs of all AANHPI students and families in Hayward.
Magandang gabi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lonnie Lomito, and I am co-leading the Asian Pacific Islander Community Initiative of Hayward Unified School District. We are deeply grateful for the City of Hayward's proclamation in support of our Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander communities in the city. Like what our mission states, APC strives to promote awareness, understanding, and celebration of AANHPI cultures and identities among students in the school district. In a brief span of two years, APC has accomplished remarkable growth. We have delivered 20 significant topics to close than 1,000 of our AANHPI students and families during our monthly community gatherings, encompassing subjects such as college preparation in collaboration with local educational institutions, and partnering with the FBI to educate students about cyberbullying, and families about online scams and frauds. As a direct result of APC's efforts and advocacy, HUSD allocated funding for AANHPI events and activities at each school site that led to multicultural shows, educational field trips, resources fair and outreach, AANHPI student recognitions, cultural and historical presentations, and so much more. Nevertheless, this budget is at risk next year due to our fiscal deficit. I would like to take this opportunity to appeal in our esteemed Mayor Mark Salinas and honorable members of this council, who aspire to establish Hayward as an education city, to consider supporting APC in any way feasible, allowing us to continue serving the increasing number of AANHPI students in our city. We are receptive to any suggestions and support from all of you. I sincerely hope that the education city dream for Hayward will encompass our Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander students and families within the Hayward Unified School District and beyond. While there is still much work to be done, we are clearly making progress. Again, I extend my gratitude and wish for peace to be with us all. Marami salamat. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Neither of them mentioned it, but I wanted to give my thanks to Lonnie Lomito and Jennifer Rivera, who both have given vision to the Asian and Pacific Islander Community Initiative in Hayward. They have done remarkable strides in the last two years with this program, again, bringing a new level of engagement to our API community within the district. And, you know, you heard about the vision and everything that, you know, that we strive for in establishing this group for our families in HUSD. And while we do face, you know, difficult challenges ahead in terms of our budget, we remain committed to identifying unique ways for us to continue to make space available for our APC families. And so, we just want to thank you again for the opportunity to be recognized this evening, and thank you always for supporting our students and families.
Good evening, Hayward City officials and community members. My name is Teresa Huaing, a proud Hayward homeowner and founder of the Strong, Smart, and Kind Foundation, also known as the SSK Foundation. We are 100% volunteer-led nonprofit proudly based here in Hayward since 2019. At SSK, we focus on mental health, women empowerment, and youth mentorship. While our services are open to all, our work is deeply rooted in and tailored to uplift the AAPI community. We host events every single month, and in many months, multiple events. Over the years, we've impacted hundreds of lives, not just through education and support, but by creating real, lasting change. One powerful example is our Women Empowerment Summit this past March. We welcomed over 250 women from all walks of life, from Asian woman business owners to a Filipino Catholic nun, to marginalized individuals living in safe houses. At SSK, everyone has a place. And at that summit, two lives were literally saved. One woman, who had survived abuse and was on the brink of giving up and suicide that day, found hope again through a connection she made at our workshop. I'm so emotional because it was a very raw story. Another woman, inspired by the story she heard that day, decided to get a mammogram, something she would have never done, and luckily she did because she caught breast cancer. In many Asian cultures, silence is the norm. But at SSK, we create spaces where people feel safe, seen, and supported. Where healing begins and leadership grows. We have a youth leadership happening next month. I started this foundation because I grew up in an immigrant family where pain was never discussed, mental health was a taboo and still is. And if something hard or unjust happened, the response was always suck it up, deal with it, move on. But I knew that silence wasn't healing, it was hurting us. I wanted to change that for myself, for my community, and for the next generation. So, SSK is more than a nonprofit, it's a movement powered by love, purpose, and our people. So, thank you so much for recognizing our mission and we're just getting started. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Salinas, council members, and community members. And of course, we have a few Wildcats in the house.
My name is Lisa Tess, and I proudly serve as the principal at Winton Middle School. On behalf of our students, staff, and families, I want to thank you for recognizing May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Hayward. This proclamation is more than just symbolic. It reflects the values we strive to uphold every day in our schools, inclusion, celebration of culture, and community pride. At Winton, we've worked intentionally over the years to honor the diverse identities of our AANHPI students. From school-wide cultural celebrations, student-led assemblies and classroom lessons, to community partnerships and parent engagement, we have centered student voice and authentic representation in our approach. We are especially proud that our students feel seen and celebrated, not just in May, but throughout the entire year. Thank you for recognizing Winton Middle School tonight. We are honored and grateful to be part of a city that uplifts the stories, heritage, and contributions of all of its people. Many thanks, and mahalo.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this incredible opportunity. My name is Nyleen Makaship Tamundo, school counselor and Asian Pacific Islander Club advisor at Winton Middle School, and a proud daughter of a Filipino immigrant. Standing here today feels deeply personal. My mother came to this country with hope, resilience, and a dream that her children would have the opportunity she never had. Moments like these are a testament to her sacrifices and to the countless of sacrifices made by Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander families across generations. They're also a great reminder of how powerful representation is. At Winton Middle School, I'm honored to lead the Asian Pacific Islander Club. As Ms. Tess said, a student-driven space where our youth can celebrate their heritage, uplift their voices, and take pride in their cultural identities. Through community events, cultural showcases, and courageous conversations, these students are not only learning about their roots, but they're shaping the future and spreading strength. Their leadership and pride have created a ripple effect at Winton, inspiring others to embrace who they are and where they come from. That's the kind of impact that lasts, and that's how real change begins. Recognizing Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here in Hayward is not just symbolic, it is extremely powerful. It tells our AANHPI youth that their stories matter, that their cultures are valued, and that they belong. I want to give a heartfelt thanks to Winton Middle School and Ms. Lonnie for their trailblazer leadership and for being advocates in making this recognition possible. And to the incredible students at Winton's APIC, your passion, pride, and presence have left a mark beyond our school walls. Keep raising your voices, keep honoring your heritage, the world is listening. Let's continue to uplift AANHPI voices, not just this month, but every single day. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I just want to say thank you so much for this proclamation. I also want to say, speaking on behalf of the almost 30% of our Hayward population that are Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders, and then if you count the people that identify as mixed race, it's a really large population of the city. But I just want to say that if you talk to people, mostly they talk, if you ask them about Asian heritage, they will talk about the cuisine. But we are so much more than the cuisine and the stereotypes, and we are part of the leadership right here on the dais we have represented, but just in general. And the City Library takes real pride in showcasing our leadership, the people in science, and the arts, and the cultural different things. I want to acknowledge Weney over here, Weney Wallace, who is our Chinese-American librarian, who is really active in the community, Stonebury School, we have partnered with them. And I also want to acknowledge other partners we've worked with, Hayward Area Historical Society, the Hayward Arts Council, everything we do is in partnership with HUSD, all of our different groups. And we're really proud of the role we play in making the city a successful city and in walking together into the future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Adelman, I appreciate it. And spoken like a librarian, and thank you very much, I really appreciate that. Our next special presentation is, you know, it's a, how can I put it? I'm not going to say sad, but it is certainly a moment in our city's history that we will miss. Tonight is the last council meeting for Assistant City Manager Dustin Clausen. Mr. Clausen has taken a position at another fine city with another fine mayor. But I think you've met your match, because like you, the mayor at that other fine city has a PhD in economics from MIT, and coincidentally specializes in municipal finance, of all things. You've met your match, sir. But I know, I'm sure others here on the dais will say a few words, but before I read this, Mr. Clausen, I want to say thank you very, very much for everything you have done for this city. Your career here has spanned way over 10 years, I think close to 14 years, and you have squarely confronted virtually every challenge successfully that this city has seen, from labor negotiations to budget crunches to deficits to... Did I say labor negotiations? Did I say budget crunches? A pandemic. And our comeback out of a pandemic. And you have been at the helm at some of the most biggest successes that this city has seen, from economic development to public works. And your work, a lot of the projects you see around town, your fingerprints on the financial side of those projects are all over. And I cannot say enough that I really appreciate your work on all of that. And there was a moment where, of course, you were interim city manager, where you and I worked very close together. And the work that you've done with us, and the time that we had to hang out together and go to mayor conferences together, I just really appreciated your work and your support on that. And so, what I'll do is let me read the accommodation, and then we'll have some words for you. Also, I did not see one up here. It is being made, we will have one up here for you, but we're going to have a street sign. And, you know, I mean, I think it's worth like Dustin Clausen, I don't know, Dustin Clausen Square, or Dustin, I don't know, with your time with the city deserves, I don't know. It's bigger than a street, and it's bigger than lane, so it's got to be something that matches your reputation. So, we'll make sure we get that for you before you leave. But anyways, here's the certificate of accommodation. And here, and I'll ask Councilmember Andrews to hold that. Certificate of Accommodation. Whereas, this certificate of accommodation is being presented to Assistant City Manager Dustin Clausen upon his departure from the City of Hayward on May 30, 2025, in honor of his dedication and commitment to the City of Hayward organization and community. Whereas, with over 12 years of private sector and public service experience, and a BS in accounting from St. Mary's College of California, Dustin Clausen joined, I guess there's another Gail, Gail, Gail in the room? Okay. Dustin Clausen joined the City of Hayward team in 2014 as the Deputy Director of Finance before being promoted to the role of Finance Director in 2017, and to the role of Assistant City Manager in 2022. And whereas, prior to joining the Hayward team in 2014, Dustin worked for the Public Health Institute in Oakland and served as their Assistant Controller for Audit, Compliance, and Special Projects. Prior to his work with the Public Health Institute, Dustin served as the Treasury Analyst for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission in Oakland, and as the Audit Supervisor for Mays and Associates in Pleasant Hill. And whereas, Dustin is active in many professional organizations, including the California State Municipal Finance Officers and Government Finance Officers Association. I bet those are great organizations. He is also the Chair of the California Government Voluntary Employee Beneficiary Association. I am not going to say the acronym on that one. A Chair of the Alameda County Finance Officers Group, and a member of the International City-City Management Association. And whereas, during Dustin's tenure as Finance Director, the City of Hayward was presented with the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for fiscal years 2017, 2018, and 2019 through 2023. This is the gold standard on budgets, and that's what he has done for this city. Dustin was honored by the Hayward Area Recreation and Park District as its 2024 Individual of the Year for his dedication and service to the Hayward community and his role as the City of Hayward's Assistant City Manager and interim city manager. And whereas, Dustin's impact on the Hayward organization will be felt for many years following his departure, particularly given his leadership in serving as the City of Hayward's Assistant City Manager, as the interim city manager from May 2024 to January 2025, and as the Finance Director during the global pandemic. Whereas, Dustin has demonstrated outstanding leadership, excellence, communication, care, intelligence, insight, innovation, flexibility, grace, commitment, and an intimate knowledge of the City of Hayward, its residents, and city employees during his tenure in Hayward. And his unwavering professionalism and dedication to this organization will be sorely missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the City of the Hayward City Council do hereby commend Dustin Clausen for his tireless dedication and unwavering service as the Assistant City Manager for the City of Hayward, expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude for his valued contributions to making the Hayward community... for his valued contributions to making the Hayward community a better place to live, work, and play, and extend our congratulations and offer our best wishes on his future endeavors. It has been a privilege and an honor for all of us to work with Dustin for the betterment of the City of Hayward. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Dustin Clausen a big round of applause. And before we go down and take a picture, Mr. Clausen, I'm going to ask each council member to say a word or two of appreciation. And I'll, I'll start with Councilmember Cyrup, and then we'll work our way down the dais.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dustin. There's a lot I want to express. I think the main thing I want to share is just how much of my experience with the City of Hayward has been shaped and informed by our relationship, my experience with you. Prior to my time on council, I came to you as a Finance Director talking about this crazy idea called a public bank, which I still believe in and I'm still going to push for. But what really struck me about that conversation is this was prior to me being on council. It was our first time interacting. But it made the city feel so accessible, so approachable, because you were so approachable. And I was just a slightly younger person with this idea that we'd never talked about before. And you welcomed it, and you really engaged with it, and you put it on the agenda, and you let me bring it before the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And I felt really involved in my city government because of you. And in a lot of ways, you were one of my first interfaces to what it meant to work with the city. And it really colored what I thought was possible just as a resident of this city and how, whoa, you know, we can actually shape the things that happen here. This is our government. And I don't know if, you know, if that experience had gone in a different direction, if I would be sitting here today. So I just really want to appreciate you and how you approach our community and approach this work. It definitely shaped how I do my work here, and I'm going to miss you. And I wish you the best of luck in your next position. Thanks.
I can't remember a time, you know, in my service to the city that you weren't here. And, you know, you really do embody the spirit of this city. Your welcoming attitude, your supportive conversation, your collaborative spirit, how you get along great with everybody, relationship building. And, you know, for that, there's, it's very commendable. I think your next city is going to be very fortunate to get you. And I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving with you, and I want to thank you for your service.
Dustin, I am so sad to see you go. This is a bittersweet moment, but I know this is going to be nothing but good for you. You brought so much to this city and many said already. You've been so approachable and very patient, especially with me. And I just really appreciate our tough conversations, but also very positive conversations and your just realness when we spoke. And they're lucky to have you, and you're going to be a great asset to that organization. And can't wait to see what you do in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. Dustin, I wanted to acknowledge you as a remarkable city manager and just a highly dedicated leader to the Hayward community. Over the years, you've had a steadfast hand at the helm of some of the most complex moments and critical moments in our city's history. You've offered your expertise in areas spanning HR, finance, and just about every area that we needed you, including at the helm of the city as the interim city manager. Your ability to lead through some of the most complex issues our community has faced has been nothing short of remarkable. You're always calm under pressure. You're thoughtful in your approach, and you're deeply committed to doing what's right for our community. You're a jack-of-all-trades, a trusted leader, and someone that I've deeply grown to admire. I actually remember, you know, when we went from colleagues to friends and kind of really starting to see who you were as a leader and as someone with just a big, caring heart who is always committed to doing the right thing. We're going to miss you greatly, but I know you're going to continue to do great things in your next chapter. If there's anything that we can do to support you, please let us know because you've done an incredible job supporting us. So we look forward to hearing about all the greatness that you have coming ahead of you, Dustin. But thank you again for everything you've done for me and for our community.
Thank you, Dustin. Yeah, I want to, I want to thank you for everything you've given to Hayward all these years. I know you've been, you've also been my expert go-to on all things matter to do with the city as I've, you know, gotten to know the city the last two years. I have so much respect for you and the work that you do here. Your opinions really weighed heavily on me as we made decisions and moved forward. You were always open to conversation, even when they were difficult, and I really appreciated that. And we always sort of managed to work our way through that. So, thank you. I wish you nothing but the best in your next role. They're going to be lucky to have you. Thanks for everything, Dustin.
Dustin, thank you very much. There are two reasons why I like you. One is that you shopped Hayward first with all the drinks. So thank you very much. And the other one is that, as you know, City Hayward is the heart of the Bay, and you've demonstrated heart for our residents, and I think that's extremely important. So the people with whom you've dealt, the residents, I've gotten a couple of calls that this guy's good. So you do have heart. That's amazing. So you went from a desk job dealing with money to all the way to acting, city manager, and that's something that's very, very commendable. Muchas gracias y abrazo.
I will be brief because I know we've got a lot of business to take care of. But I, I would like to, you know, just, just say how honored and privileged I've been to, to have. Can we have someone close the back door? How honored and privileged I have been to serve this community and this organization and in front of, you know, in my opinion, the best council across the Bay Area, the way that you guys have, have led through all kinds of adversity and done so in a very professional and collegial way. The, you know, the organization benefits from it. The community benefits from it. And we're able to make transformational things happen here in our community. So really just grateful to have been able to be a part of that for 11 years. My plan to come here for a year, maybe two tops, was really poor, I can tell. I didn't execute very well on that, but it has been an amazing ride and, you know, certainly shaped my life. So very grateful for the opportunity that you all gave me and to serve along such great folks on the executive team and colleagues around the city. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Great. Okay. Thank you. We are going to move on to public comment. And let me see. We, our first public comment is Dr. Carlos Hernandez from Bay Philharmonic Upcoming Concert. Dr. Hernandez.
Greetings, Mayor Salinas, Hayward Council members, executive team. It's always a privilege and an honor to be here. And just a reminder as to how much further my, my own service can be in all the communities that I'm a part of. We've got a really great show coming up June 22. It's a Beatles tribute concert. So we have essentially a Beatles cover band with orchestra behind. Interestingly enough, the Beatles never got a chance to perform with orchestra, apart from their studio recordings. So this is going to be real special. We hope to see you there. If you'd love tickets, we'd love to, you know, just welcome you to the show if you've never been before, especially. We tend to also do a lovely dinner after. And so if you've never been, please, please let us invite you. Again, thank you so much, and it's always an honor and a privilege and just really great reminders as to how I need to also be serving my communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The Beatles backed up by an orchestra. Nice. Nice. Our next public comment is Rosa Linda Romero. Hit the button.
Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah. So I'm here to give a few words for Dustin, who has been more than a mentor and a friend for me in the past eight years. So let me read from him because I'm a little emotional that he's leaving the city. It's been an absolute privilege working alongside you for the last eight years, Dustin. Our shared love of hip-hop brought us together, but over time, that bond grew into one of the most meaningful friendships I've had in my career. Our daily conversations turned into something much more than just work talk. They became moments of mentorship, support, and understanding. You were always more than just a colleague. You were a mentor, a friend, and someone who just kept it real, no matter what the situation was. Your advice guided me through some of my toughest times, both professionally and personally, and I will forever be grateful for that. Thank you for making the challenging days more manageable and for being a constant source of support, not just for me, but for so many over the years. The City of Hayward was incredibly lucky to have you as a genuine care, for someone who genuinely cared for the residents, residents we serve, and the team that makes it all happen. I'm going to miss seeing you every day, but this isn't goodbye. Our friendship will live on beyond the walls of City Hall. Wu-Tang forever.
You know, I've, I've been up here a few years, and I don't think I've ever heard Wu-Tang forever from the dais. I, I mean, I don't know. Chi Volmer? I mean, you've been here longer than me. I mean, Wu-Tang forever? Our next speaker is here online, and it's TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I won't, I'll just be brief. I also wanted to thank Mr. Clausen for the interface with our group. The couple of times that we had asked him some questions, he was very responsive, very good with follow-up. I really appreciate him very much. And also, I just was thinking, as you were doing the presentation, about the last National Night Out kickoff caravan that he happened to be driving in. I believe he was driving a truck with our mayor. And there was a car that kept, it was one of those old vintage cars that kept breaking down on the parade route, and he had actually stopped to help. And I think that also just speaks to his character and just, you know, a lot of, a lot of heart. So just wanted to thank you on behalf of our group. Thank you.
I forgot about that. Next caller is, with the last three letters, numbers is 341.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and especially Dustin Clausen. I wanted to say thank you, Dustin. This is Velda Go from Faith Gardens. I live in Hayward 18 years now, and every interaction I had with you was very positive and proactive. So good luck in your new career in Stanley Andrew. My comment tonight is about Faith Gardens upcoming third annual Kwanzaa celebration in Hayward City Hall, for which we're putting forth a grant to SAC. And I was hoping that I could get the support of Hayward as far as media coverage in the SAC. Again, we're going to be collaborating, hopefully, with the library, Director Adelman, like we did last year. We're adding collaboration with Hard as well as Sun Gallery. And because the funding is reduced this year, we will be actively seeking sponsorship with other Hayward businesses and, of course, all the small businesses in Hayward as vendors. So we look forward to the City of Hayward supporting the African-American cultural national recognition of the Kwanzaa celebration. And we will again be applying for funding, and we'll appreciate the opportunity to do so. So thank you very much, and we appreciate all the service that council members do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And right to the final moments, Mr. Clausen will get the pitch for funding. Well, thank you, and thank you for all of those kind words. And, and again, Mr. Clausen, good luck and Godspeed. So thank you. Seeing no more public comment, I will move on to city managers' comments. And I believe Acting City Manager Lawson has a few comments.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. I'm your acting city manager for a week, but your city attorney for nearly 18 years. I don't do a lot of talking in the public session, which is probably a good thing. I do a lot of my talking in closed session, which is also a good thing. I'm probably perceived as, you know, that, that tall, serious, quiet, good-looking lawyer. Emphasis on lawyer. But I want to make a few comments primarily around the challenges that we have with our budget. But I'd like to have the executive team stand, please. All of you, chief, deputy chief, Ryan. Marion, please. Thank you. Please sit. I want to acknowledge the members of the executive team here in the chamber, as well as members who are not with us this evening, because this group is smart. This group is disciplined, and this group is confident. I say that because we've got a serious budget challenge that we're taking on. And two weeks ago in these chambers, we held a budget work session with the primary focus being on the general fund. This is on the, on the big screen, a pie chart of our current fiscal year budget ending June 30. The pie chart just represents where most, well, all of our general fund budget goes. But you'll see in the green that nearly 80% of our budget goes to people. This is pretty consistent with public agencies around the Bay Area, certainly cities. So we are aligned with the challenges that many public agencies are facing. But I want you to know that in that session, we heard you loudly and clearly that relying on reserves to balance the general fund budget at the scale that was proposed is not acceptable. The executive team members and I are rolling up our sleeves. We're looking everywhere for additional savings. And we'll be working on that when we present the next budget proposal, June 17. The work before us is a balancing act. We are committed to preserving core services and the employees we have invested in to deliver those services. But let me also remind you that the community has But let me also remind you that the community has been supportive. 2014, the community adopted Measure C. 2016, cannabis tax. 2020, the hotel tax. 2022, the real estate transfer tax. And then in November, K1, which is also Measure C. And we have those promises to keep. We've projected a deficit of 12.6 million. That number might be a little bit higher, I'm informed, as of today. With that in mind, we are working collaboratively to bring back on June 17th, an updated budget proposal that is less reliant on reserves. And we also are working on a plan to bring back annual expenditures that will provide a balanced budget this year. We understand that there's going to be a fall revise and work throughout the year for fiscal '26. This is what you expect, it's what the community expects, and it's what the executive team here and online are going to deliver. I appreciate your support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and again, I also share, along with the council, shares our appreciation of the executive team and, and all of our members of the City of Hayward organization. So thank you very much for your comments. Our next item, I'm going to move on to our next item, is our consent calendar. I did not get any, oh, we do have one comment, but I didn't get anybody who wanted to pull anything, so what I'd like to do is, before I go to an action, let me call on Council member Andrews for her comment.
Yep, my comment is on item number six. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Vikram Gotham for his service on the Clean and Green Commission, and look forward to seeing what he does next.
Thank you very much. And what I'll do, before I ask for a motion, I will close this portion, go on to public comment. I don't see any public comment in the chamber. There is no public comment online, so I have to close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Moved by Councilmember Cyrup.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Roach, and if there are no objections, it will unanimously pass, and it will be recorded, so. Moving on to our work session, item number seven, WS25-023, is the Hayward Boulevard Feasibility Study: Proposed Restriping and Safety Improvements Recommended by the Hayward, Hayward Boulevard Feasibility Study Project Number 05217. This report will be delivered to us by way of Public Works Director, Mr. Amiri, and I also see his colleague.
Hugh Louch.
Yeah, Hugh Louch. So go right ahead.
Yes, Hugh Louch, Deputy Director of Public Works for Transportation, is going to deliver the report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I'm Hugh Louch, Deputy Public Works Director, and happy to give you this presentation tonight. This is a much-studied project, a lot of interest from the community, which we'll talk a little bit about, and definitely look forward to your feedback. So maybe to start out, I'll talk a little bit about where we think we want to end up, and then talk you, to you about how we got to this place and where, what we've heard from the community. This project did emerge out of the feasibility study, although there has been, I would say, a fairly substantial update since we started that project now a while ago, which was to really focus on what we could do sort of in a practical manner with the implementation activities that we have going on, which generally involve repaving the street and then focusing some improvements on some, on some more focused pedestrian safety improvements as well. So the recommendation we have is to restripe Hayward Boulevard between campus and Farmhill to two lanes, that's one in each direction. It's already one lane in each direction east of Farmhill, and it will remain two in each direction to the west of campus. We'd also, in the space available by that restriping, be adding bicycle lanes, and we'd be continuing those, that work on designing the pedestrian crossings. As I mentioned, the feasibility itself started before the pandemic, a little bit before the pandemic, and kind of got to a point where it was put on hold primarily due to staffing issues and some community feedback that we didn't feel like we had the staff to manage through at that time. And then we picked it back up again last year, really, as we realized there was an upcoming opportunity due to repaving of the street that we wanted to, to look at and make sure that we could implement as safe a project as possible. The overall objective of the project really is about creating safety on the street for all different folks traveling on that street. The project had really robust engagement in that first phase, and then we have continued quite a lot of engagement in the current phase of work that we've been doing. So we were at the Council Infrastructure and Airport Committee back in February, and we had a lot of comments then. We did hold a couple of public meetings this spring, so we were, both of them were held at CSU East Bay. One was kind of student-focused, and we kind of popped in on their lunch hour and had some folks, students and staff, come by. And then in May, we did hold a public meeting there as well and had quite a few participants. We also, through this process, have been coordinating with the fire department as one of the main concerns that we'll talk about in a second relates to emergency evacuation. We've received a tremendous amount of feedback. It's generally included in the packet that was, or the agenda item packet, so you've seen a lot of that. I know those of you who are on CAC have heard a lot of this as well or participated in some of the other meetings. And I would say, I don't want to under-report, I want to make sure it's very clear that, I would say, you know, nine out of 10 folks we've heard from have really asked that we retain the capacity of the street as it is today, so keep it as a four-lane street. We have heard a lot of concerns about that related to congestion. We've heard more than that, I would say we've heard concerns related to emergency evacuation. Going back to that original study, the original study had a very kind of robust alternative that involved medians, a lot of sidewalk work, a lot of very expensive work, that honestly, as we picked the project back up, we realized wouldn't really be feasible within city resources and wouldn't compete well for grants. And so we did really focus then on things we could do with more kind of practical, more practical means. And because of that concern about emergency evacuation, which has been heard throughout the project, we really have worked on the design, which I'll talk about in a second, to focus on how we can make sure we accommodate that need without kind of giving up some of the safety improvements that we think we would be getting. There has been general recognition throughout about speeding on the street. Everyone is aware there's a lot of speeding and about the safety issues that result from So this figure, this slide really just kind of shows you a couple pieces of information that relate to that information about speeding. So on the left, you have the actual speeds on the street. These are in the peak period, and they give you both what we call the, or the average speed, so like the, you know, what, if you take the average of all cars traveling, as well as the 85th percentile speed, so that's the speed at which 85% of cars are traveling or less. And you can see they're quite high, they exceed significantly, you know, what we would like to see on that street. And the map on the right kind of is a demonstration of where Hayward Boulevard sits within our evaluation of streets. So many of you know that we are in the middle of doing a speed management plan, and that speed management plan is looking at every street and is looking at data, every street we can get data for, some of the very small residential streets we don't actually have data for. But it shows kind of where there, the speeds of those streets compared to what the target we would like for them. So this is very much an in-progress, and you'll get more information about this in the not-too-distant future. And you can see that Hayward Boulevard off to the right really kind of stands out as one of the streets that has much higher speeds than what we want to see on the streets that we have. And again, with an overall objective of bringing speeds down as one of the most important things we can do to improve the safety of people traveling in Hayward. So this slide shows you what is proposed as part of staff's recommendation. On the top, you have what's there today, generally a four-lane street. There are some areas where there's concrete, medians, and there are some areas of sidewalk gaps. And then what we're proposing now, and this is a revision from what we presented to CAC back in February, is to still pursue a two-lane road with a center-turn lane throughout, and then to have bike lanes, but in this case, we would be having buffered bike lanes on both sides. So we, we wouldn't at this time install any actual physical separation between the bike lanes and the lanes. And this would essentially mean that the entirety of the paved width that, as it exists today, could be available if needed during an emergency evacuation and make that, that process very simple. Later on, we could evaluate if, if some separation might be considered to be added, but at the current time when we're repaving, we wouldn't be doing that. Did want to just note a couple specific locations within the corridor and some of the things that we've identified there. Kind of based on the feedback we heard from CAC and from the public, we are talking about widening out as you head westbound, excuse me, as you approach Campus Drive, so that's that kind of top figure, which would then essentially, in the busiest part of the corridor, start to provide some capacity back as people are traveling downhill and towards Mission Boulevard. And just sort of west of this point, as you pass Campus Boulevard, it is and will remain two lanes. And then further up the road, you can see kind of to the east of Parkside, and as you approach Farmhill, you do have what are the steepest part of the corridors, and you do have parts of the corridor where we have heard of people who, a number of collisions into people's homes and one thing another. And here, you have the lowest volumes on the corridor of the whole stretch that we're looking at. And you also have an opportunity to do things like speed markings, where you have those kind of lines that get closer together that make people think they're going faster than they are, and it does create this small sort of benefit in terms of slowing people down. And then I did just want to note, as I mentioned before, there's been broad interest and support from the community for the kind of more sidewalk gap closures, as well as improving pedestrian crossings, and we've identified a number of those. These still need to go through a design process, so they can't be implemented in the short term, but we are in the process of working on that and do have plans to move that forward. So finally, I just, just want to note that, you know, we did hear, and I hope I've been clear, that there are not many members of the community, you've heard from some of them writing in, you've, we've certainly heard that are concerned about this, they're concerned about the congestion, they're concerned about the analysis that shows that there won't be congestion. And we did just want to present that, that we did see options, those are listed in the staff report, and we're certainly willing and interested in hearing your feedback on which of those options we could move forward.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add that, as Hugh mentioned, there are four options that are listed on page six of your staff report. We are recommending option number two. That was not an easy choice to make, and the first choice. We had a lot of debate internally about which option to recommend. Given the history of this project, given that I started this in 2021 and heard a lot of sharp feedback from residents that they did not want to lose their two lanes and get bike lanes instead, and again, we have had a lot of expressions of concern about this. We have also looked at option three now, which is making Hayward Boulevard one lane in each direction just east of Civic. East of Civic, the volume of traffic is low, it lends itself to being two lanes without creating much difficulty. We are not going to add any bike lanes there, but just use the extra width as shoulder so it can be used in an emergency for, for exit. That is also an option that I'll be comfortable living with. We went with option number two for reasons that Hugh mentioned, and also because that is the adopted city policy for complete streets. But we can live with option three as well, if that's what your choice is going to be, and make it work. With that, and implementation of some other safety improvements that all residents are in favor of and have been listed here, like crossings, safe crossings at three locations, that could also be a viable option for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to, before I go to public comment, I did have, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions regarding this. And the first question is, have, you know, there is a proposed school being built up there on the corner of Hayward Boulevard and campus. The school district is going to relocate Bret Hart Middle School, which is going to be more kids and, you know, you know, 180 days of the year, there's going to be, you know, twice a day, morning and afternoon, and then I would assume on weekends with sports and athletics, you know, there's going to be, the impact on traffic is going to be incredible. I don't know, I mean, I, the school district hasn't reached out to me. I don't know if they've reached out to staff on this, but I guess the question I want to ask is, would it be too premature to start working on, you know, reconfiguring lanes today when in, in a couple, three or four years, there, I mean, all of that corridor is going to change because of the amount of traffic? And I guess that's the, you know, that's the first question. I have a, I have a follow-up question, but let me ask that question first.
Yeah, thanks for that. Just do want to know, we, staff are very much reviewing and participating with the school district in the evaluation, and there has been a traffic impact study done for the school that looks at that. And so the school location is in a place on the corridor where we're effectively not impacting the capacity regardless, because your access to it is, it's really off of Highland, and there won't be any direct access off of Hayward Boulevard itself. You would come up, if you were coming from Hayward Boulevard, you'd come up, turn onto campus, turn onto Highland to get into the school. Districts of this restriping that's proposed wouldn't actually impact directly what's happening at the school. You might come from campus, you might come from some other directions, but, but we don't think it'll have a significant impact on that.
So, so let me, let me just follow up and say this. While that might be true now, I can tell you right now that the impact on traffic coming off of campus onto Hayward Boulevard, while, while the flow of traffic is going to be coming in through Highland onto campus, I mean, they're going to be coming from somewhere. They're going to be coming from Hayward Boulevard, campus, you know, and, and, you know, I can, I can, anyway, so I guess, so with that, let me ask my next question. My next question is, what can we do today that would, you know, meet a goal of reducing traffic speed? And just, and sort of, let's get traffic speed under control and add the elements to do that, and then keep ourselves open to the next two or three years when we really look at two things. One, the impact that school will have, that school's going to have a, a big impact. I'm just, I can just see it. The neighborhood's already talking about it, and we're getting, and we're getting feedback. The second, the second part is, you know, what can we do now so that we can come back later and, and enhance the street, or stripe the street, or add what we need to do to it with bike lanes and all the other, you know, what work can we do now that would be sort of the minimum? And I'm sure there's going to be road improvements done between now and the next year or so. You know, what can we do to meet all of these things that will sort of give us a little bit of time to work with the school district?
I'll, I'll just start. Mr. Mayor, as you know, there used to be a school where the new school is being proposed or in the vicinity until 2008 or so. That was an elementary school. Of course, you know, the traffic is a little bit different, but there is going to be an environmental review, as it was mentioned, traffic study that will be done to see what is the incremental change between 2008 and, and now in terms of traffic. To the second part of your question, maybe implementation of option three that I mentioned, which is making Hayward Boulevard two lanes east of Civic and maintaining those lanes as shoulders for, you know, future consideration, that's an option that we can pursue. And with some other safety improvements, crossing improvements that we can do to make crossings safer.
Well, I did want to know, and I should have said this in my presentation, so the street is being repaved this summer as part of our repaving program, so any striping choice we make now, you know, will last for some extended period of time. There could be, you know, a partial striping with kind of space held for a future consideration where we might come back and do it later. So there, there are ways that we could do that, and we could look into that potentially if that was the direction, but it would, it would be a little bit more work, and we'd be, we'd be deferring like some part of the decision to a future date.
So I just, I'm going to go to public comment, but what I, I just, to be quite honest with you, you know, I would, I would you, you know, I would, I would recommend that we defer this project, and primarily because of two reasons. One, I have not seen a, just a true thorough impact report, traffic impact report from that middle school. Yes, there was a elementary school there with less kids, we're going to put a middle school there, which is going to be more kids and a lot more traffic. And we already have seen the impact that Stone Bray up on the hill is having on Hayward Boulevard. And so I'm, and those two schools are going to be letting out relatively at the same time. So that's one. And of course, the second part is, you know, I, I would like to see a more current traffic study that really focuses on that intersection. But, so I would like to see this delayed, but delayed only to the point where we can continue, you know, let's continue with, you know, road improvements, perhaps, you know, continue with, you know, the stripe, restriping and putting the elements with the focus of slowing traffic down. But, but in terms of, you know, changing the configurations of the lanes, I'm just not there just yet because of the impact that I know that that school's going to have. So I'll wait and see what my colleagues feel about that, but I would, it would be very hard for me to direct staff to do anything tonight on that, but, you know, I didn't want to spend too much time on this. But next would be, so let me go to public comment, and let me see, public comment. We do have, well, actually, let me go to speakers here in the room. I'll go to the first speaker, Mr. Brian Schott.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you. In 1969, my family moved to the, what is now the Challenge Homes Highlands, where Hayward Boulevard flattens out 57 years ago. At that time, Hayward Boulevard was one lane each direction, Parkside Drive was one lane each direction. The hill is still steep, and it is not going to get any less steep, which means, although you have e-bikes, the amount of traffic going up the hill on bicycles has never been an issue. So I chaired the Hayward Hills Neighborhood Task Force several years ago. Part of that came up as to what was going to happen, especially the folks in the old Highlands were concerned that the city hasn't spent any real money in 50 years, and at that time, these homes were of lower value. Now, the bigger valued homes are going in up there, which means higher property taxes. The answer to your question, what could be done right now? A radar gun and a motorcycle. Preferably, two radar guns, two motorcycles, because I would submit that the vast majority of people going up that hill are repeat users, meaning they go up and they come down. It is not a thoroughfare like Mission Boulevard or Foothill, but these are people that live somewhere near that hill, really as far as Stone Bray. Because anything else, they would not be going up that far, there's other avenues. I read all the public comments on the report, not one of them supported reducing the lanes. And as you know, you don't get a lot of public support anytime you ask the public in a survey. So if everybody says, we're concerned about the traffic, we're concerned about garbage trucks and buses and cement trucks and semis that go up that hill to support Stone Bray, that, if one of those guys stops, you're going to have people passing around them on a downhill thing, it's not going to be pretty. But when you did the Campus Drive one lane thing, I was involved in that because I live at the intersection of Campus and Highland. And you're right, Mr. Mayor, 600 kids are projected to go into a school that I went to that had one portable at the time, and now they must have 20 portables there. That traffic is going to be horrendous there. But any of you who might know the name Tommy Rodriguez, he was a Hayward cop, now with the, with the county sheriff, Mr. Rodriguez owned Second Street, and he gave out more autographs on three-part paper than Steph Curry will ever give out, and you see very little speeding today on Second Street. Support the budget, it would cost about $1,000 per officer per day, you don't have to do it every day. A couple of times a week for about a month, and the people that are violating that will get the answer. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and the wonderful, wonderful City Council that we have here in Hayward. Very happy to be here. My name is Bridget Low, I'm a Hayward resident, and I just want to thank the staff for all of your hard work and meeting with the residents up there several times. I do appreciate all the work that you put into it. I do not support reducing the lanes of traffic from four lanes to two on Hayward Boulevard, on any part of Hayward Boulevard. The staff report states that the fire department is on board with the plan, but I would like to know what the fire department believes are the best practices, because Hayward residents deserve the best regarding evacuating Hayward residents who live along Hayward Boulevard, and I mean all the way up Hayward Boulevard. Then I would like to know if our city has adopted those best practices and how the proposed changes will affect them. Has there actually been a study, or is there any data to show how long it will take to evacuate everyone from the hills in case of an emergency? Or how long it would take to get emergency personnel up there in case of a true emergency? I don't want to end up like Southern California where they had to decide who to evacuate and who not to evacuate. Everyone who is a Hayward resident deserves to be evacuated in the case of an emergency. The question is, are we even ready to meet the challenges of an emergency now? I'm not sure. I haven't seen anything that says one way or another, but I'm very concerned with whether or not we would be able to do it if we reduce the lanes to two. As someone who commutes up and down Hayward Boulevard every day, I do see the speeders, and I agree that there are methods to reduce people's speed, but I also am concerned about the congestion during peak commute times. And God forbid if there is a stalled vehicle on one of those lanes going up or down, especially during commute traffic. I think the previous speaker was correct, that everyone's just going to go around that person and use the opposite lane to go around that person, which will, of course, cause more, more problems and potentially be dangerous. I also, like the previous speaker, questioned the part in the staff report where it says the economic impact, part of the economic impact is that it would open bicycle lanes for people. I do not see bicyclists going up Hayward Boulevard, almost never in almost 15 years of living up there. Me, my friends, my neighbors, and according to the staff report and the attachments to the packet, the majority of Hayward residents who have spoken about this issue do not support the four lanes going down to two. However, I, my, and the people that I've spoken to, we all support the pedestrian improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Morton.
I want to thank you, Mayor, for your very wise words regarding the school. I live on Tribune, and I know we have a light there, and I appreciate having the light there, but I see sometimes a lot of cars coming down from above. If you turn that into a one-lane road, it's going to make waiting there a long time, even though we do have a light there, which would give me permission to join the crowd, but it's going to make it a very long ride. And I have a neighbor, my next-door neighbor's here with me as well, and we all are on the same thing about, okay, let's figure out how to slow down the traffic, and, but changing it down to two lane, to two lanes instead of four lanes, it's a boulevard. It's not Tribune Avenue or some street. It's a boulevard and is designed for that amount of traffic, and it's designed to even have enough space to have sidewalks for people to walk on. And it is even large enough, I believe, to have bicycles, although it's so rare to see bicycles, it's even rarer to see bicycles on Mission Street. And that's a major problem with all the units that have been added on Mission Street, or Mission Boulevard. But I really would like to point out, please, we need the four lanes, we need the four lanes, especially in emergency. We don't know if that emergency is going to be fire, or it's going to be earthquake, or whatever, you know? So that's pretty much what I want to say, is every one of the neighbors I meet at going to the Highland group, everyone I know of is against the idea of reducing it down to the two lanes. It seems kind of stupid, it seems like we're going back in time and not honoring those who built those roads for us. You know, they had the insight to say, hey, you know, this place may grow and prosper, and so we need to do something adequate for it. So I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I'm gonna go online, is Robert Stevens.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I also want to thank the staff for responding to my comments and providing the initial data. I still believe there's a disconnect between the city's infrastructure planning and its stated traffic safety goals. At the City Council Infrastructure Committee meeting, one council member referenced the recent fatalities on Hayward Streets. Another emphasized the importance of bicycle lanes and supporting alternative transportation. Yet the current proposal for Hayward Boulevard and what was previously promoted does not meaningfully address either concern. After five years and up to $350,000 in spending, we're left with a plan that includes travel lanes and a shoulder. This does little to address the community's repeated calls for improved pedestrian safety. As I noted in my previous comments, speeds along Hayward Boulevard, especially east of Cal Avenue are high, particularly in the uphill direction. The roadway's wide, straight alignment encourages speeds of more than 35 miles per hour. Unless the roadway is physically narrowed, curves are tightened, or vertical elements added, drivers will continue to travel at speeds they find comfortable. The frequent collisions with fences and utility poles in this area point to an ongoing horizontal alignment issue with Hayward Boulevard that remains unresolved. The exhibit I submitted last night shows that it's really feasible to include protected bike lanes with buffers in both directions, two westbound downhill travel lanes to support evacuation needs, and one eastbound lane. In addition, this project must include a widened sidewalk and crosswalk improvements at Parkside Drive. These safety improvements are too important to delay for another year. While they may cost more upfront, they will reduce long-term costs and risks. Hayward must take a proactive approach to its transportation investments. Delaying actions until problems escalate leads to higher costs and missed opportunities to build a safer, more complete corridor. I urge the city to revisit this plan and commit to a comprehensive solution that reflects public input and is grounded in evidence-based design solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Kelly.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to thank you, Mayor Salinas, for the comments regarding Bret Hart and Stone Bray, which is a great deal of my angst in regards to the lane closures. Specifically, we can see what's already been done at campus, which will not be able to accommodate the 600 students incoming at Bret Hart. Also, I have read the staff report and agree with the presenters there that 90% of those comments, if not higher, are against the lane closure and for the changes to allow for pedestrian safety in crosswalks that also might contribute to slowing down the speeds. It sounds like we all want speed reduction, we all want pedestrian safety, and almost all of us do not want reduction in lanes, but here we are still spending meeting after meeting discussing something that upwards of 90% of us don't want. I would love to urge the traffic planning groups to spend more time listening to the residents impacted by their changes, as so far they have provided stress, heartache, and anything but calming, and they're not even reducing speeds, they're providing impediments to the road. We've got single lanes in areas where municipalities like garbage trucks block the entire lane, our buses cannot keep up with even the posted speeds, slowing down all of the traffic to as much as 50% of the posted speeds, and any emergency vehicles continue to block those as well. I would love to comment that Brian's comments were so spot-on. I think if we address the speeding with his proposed two radars and two motorcycles, we'll be making a great dent. I also feel that having one lane just invites more traffic accidents than actual benefit to the area. This has too many residents in an area to have only one lane. Thank you for listening again.
Thank you. Our next speaker is caller with the numbers, the last three numbers are 713.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Frank, I am a teacher at Stone Bray, and just a quick thank you to Mayor Salinas, you were in my classroom not too long ago when you did reading for us, we really appreciated that. Now, I am, like what one of the previous speakers said, one of the regular traveler on Hayward Boulevard, and I feel compelled to tune in today, to actually call today, because I didn't even know that there was this item on the agenda until today. And my question, my main question is, you know, regardless, even without commenting on the merits of the option that the city staff is considering, why aren't we, the staff at Stone Bray, being asked about this at all? I understand that Bret Hart is relocating there, and that's another weak point about not reducing the lanes there, as Mayor Salinas has noted, but even more so, we already have a lot of staff, wherever, I have a lot of parents and people who are coming up to the hill on a very daily basis, why aren't we even notified that there's this change being proposed by the city staff? That's one thing. Secondly, I understand, and I, by every single day from Hayward, I live in Hayward and I work in Hayward, right? So I drive on Hayward Boulevard, I see that there are people who sadly did pass away, and there's a memorial for that as well. There is a need to reduce the speed. However, again, we're not consulted about this at all, there's no reaching out to us at all, we're not made aware of this at all, and there's, the pretty big school, Stone Bray's one of the larger elementary schools in the district, and yet there's no, there's no notification of us giving any feedback and thinking about solutions. So I'm just a little disappointed at how this is being carried out, and now there's, even with 90% plus of people residents, and I'm sure if you have the staff, it would say the same thing about reducing the lanes, no one wants this, right? So why do people, why is the staff so insistent on pushing this through when everyone seems to be not, people who actually are impacted are not for this project that they're proposing? So I just wish that there is more consideration from the staff, and I'm hoping the city council could, being that we voted for you guys, I hope you can actually, you know, provide some form of reconsideration when it comes to a project like this, and hopefully, you know, direct the city staff in a, in a better direction in terms of getting feedback. So I hope you can hear from me as another stakeholder on why it's important to reach out to us and, you know, consider why it's important to speak to us before you even try to push through this thing. This is my feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is, last numbers are 341.
Good evening, this is Beldago, and I'm the founder of the University Campus Neighborhood Association, where we're looking at the impact of all of the new developments that have definitely had a significant impact on Campus Drive, which of course, we know connects to Hayward Boulevard. And I'm going to echo what Frank said, as you all know me in the governance, and I've been working on the campus. As you all know me in the governance, and I've been working on the Campus Drive issues for seven or eight years, I've not been notified of any of these meetings on Hayward Boulevard. And I find that very disturbing. So I'm going to put that in your puffer and continue on. As you know, since they did the traffic calming on Campus Drive, reducing the lane, we used to have several accidents. So that has reduced the accidents to zero practically on Campus Drive. But Campus Drive is a different story than Hayward Boulevard. And all of my letters and proposals that have been going to the governance for years have said, since you put those signals up there, that our taxes have paid for the LED speed readout signs, why can't we just put a camera up there? We don't have to pay for personnel. They get an automatic ticket when they speed. Campus Drive is posted for 25 miles an hour, and I see the readouts at 53 miles an hour. And that has been something that I've repeated. And that can be done on Hayward Boulevard. The technology is there. It's cheap. It's there. It's available. San Francisco, San Jose, Oakland, five other cities are doing that, okay? I'm not going to say that anymore. And then the other thing is all of these new developments that they're not going to stop in Hayward. All of these reports that say there's no impact. I've been on Campus Drive almost 18 years now, and there's always an impact. And I suggested at the Hayward Unified School District meeting that they make the entrance to Bret Hart on Hayward Boulevard. There's plenty of room. There's a green belt there. I think it's $550 million, right, that we voted in for this, that they could make the entrance on Hayward Boulevard and use that green, that all that green land for parent drop off and all of that. Because if all of those providers and students are feeding from University Court and Campus Drive, that is going to be crazy. That is going to be crazy with the water tower right across the street. If there's an earthquake, I sent you guys all of this stuff. So that's my comment on that. And I agree with Mayor Salinas. In a couple of years, this is our taxpayer money. This Bret Hart.
Ms. Go, Ms. Go, I have to.
Okay, I'm done.
Even though you were agreeing with me, I have to, I have to cut you off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. The next caller is iPhone.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for taking my call, number one. Number two, thank you guys for putting this together and all your efforts in planning this. My name is Cynthia Taylor, and I live on Chronicle Avenue. I was at the last meeting a couple months ago. Just quickly, I had a question last meeting, and I haven't been following too much. But did you guys ever do the, any research on like evacuation routes? If you guys were to proceed with the two, one, one lane each way?
We cannot answer you right now, but if you just keep talking, and then we will try to address these issues later.
Well, I'm just here to say I'm still against the one-way each-way. I appreciate the efforts with the bike lanes and the safety measures. I really, really appreciate that. I think that's great. That's needed in the neighborhood. However, I am against the, 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 the one lane up and the one lane down. That's all I have to say. I think that's just, I just don't think that's a smart idea. And also hearing from other speakers, the gentleman from Bret Hart, not Bret Hart, but from Stonebury, and the, the woman here from the Hayward University, how they haven't been notified, that is surprising to me, and I think that's not a good thing either. That's all I have to say, guys. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. That was my last caller, and I will come back up to the dais. And let me just ask this quick question, a couple more quick questions. One is, option two, does that preserve the four lanes?
No, option two would be, we'd be removing, except very close to Campus Drive, we'd be keeping two lanes in the westbound direction.
Okay. Well, I gotta, I gotta be honest with you. I'm, you know, two things. One, there absolutely, absolutely, and I'm, and I think there is unanimous agreeance on this. Traffic has to slow down. We have seen accidents, not just on Hayward Boulevard, but we have seen accidents in other parts of the city that, that we absolutely need to do something about slowing down traffic. We can agree on whether it's police officers, or whether it's street treatments, or, or all of that. But I do know that as of right now, and even in the, in infrastructure, all of us that are, serve on the infrastructure, we, we get the stories. We, we see what happens. And, you know, and people are, are getting hurt and/or dying because of speeding all over the city. And so that, I think I've been, all of us on the Infrastructure Committee have been on record on addressing that. And my reluctance, and I'll just sort of put it out there. My reluctance on supporting any reconfiguring of Hayward Boulevard right now is we haven't had a thorough impact on what that school is going to have. And, and, and I, I do know that more analysis needs to happen. I under, I understand the position of, of staff about how traffic from Highland may not directly impact that. Respectfully, I'm going to disagree, because while it is projected to have 600 students on that campus, I can only imagine that there will be more. And, and so, you know, I'm, I am very leery on moving forward on this. And, but, you know, and that is my central concern. And, and so I just, I saw that you like turned on Mr. Mary and wanted to get your response to that.
Mr. Mayor, I completely understand that. But as a point of fact, I just wanted to mention that there is a traffic study that has been done for the new school. It was done in July of 2024 last year. They talk about the number of students, which is 493. The analysis has been done, but you're right that there is going to be an impact. There is a difference between middle school and the primary school, and primary school had fewer students.
So, well, okay. I will wait and hear from the rest of my colleagues. But as of right now, I, you know, I am in strong support of, you know, keeping the four lanes. I think we should, you know, move with at least temporarily doing some treatments so that, you know, that we can continue to work on slowing traffic down up there. But my central concern is that corner of Campus and Hayward Boulevard. And, and that is my central concern, and I don't know if we've, have, you know, fully thought that through. But, okay. Let me, let me go to up here. Councilmembers, there are menu.
Mayor, thank you very much, and thank you for the report. Actually, that street from Campus to Mission is very bicycle unfriendly. I tried bicycling up from Mission to Campus. Very, very, very difficult. On my way down, I almost snapped the cables on my brake, because you really have to be careful. So that, so it's, that segment is not very conducive to bicycles. So that's one, one point. The second option, we really do need to slow, come up with some kind of a measures where we really slow people down going down the hill. Very, very dangerous. I don't know, small bumps, something, but something to slow them down. Because how many have, we've lost a couple of folks on that particular corner of Carlos B. and Mission. So that's very, very important to, we need to do that. Some more signs, some lights, whatever the case may be. I like the idea of doing pedestrians' safety improvements at some of the corners. Please do that. I thank all the speakers and then all the people who called in. I, I support their particular feelings. And my option is number four, with safety improvements for pedestrians. And thank you for the study. I do agree, once we get that school built, it will be very, very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cyrep.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report. I know this has gone through a long process. You've collected a lot of feedback. Clearly, there was more feedback we could have collected. And I think, you know, we're receiving some notes from the community that our outreach might need to change to include anchor institutions like schools, for example, or certain neighborhood associations that we might have missed. So just a note for future feedback sessions as we seek community input. I've shared this before, just want to share it again for folks that are calling in or don't know me. But I grew up in the Hayward Highlands area. My parents still live up there. So when we make these comments around evacuation concerns, I'm taking the health and well-being of my parents into account here. These comments aren't made lightly. I also just want to be clear for the sake of honesty around what staff is presenting. When the suggestion is, and I'm not saying that I'm supporting this, but when the suggestion is removing one lane on both sides, what they're proposing is having the bike lanes with no buffer so they can be used as evacuation lanes, so they could effectively be two-lane roads on both sides. I know you're shaking your head, but that, that is what's in the staff report. I just, we've got to be honest if we want to have an honest conversation. The other part of this is there's a central yellow lane, too. So in essence, a fifth lane. So if there was a breakdown anywhere along the way, there'd actually be two ways you could go around a vehicle that stopped. So I just want to be clear, you know, the community is speaking here. I respect people writing in, but I also want to make sure we're not making disingenuous comments and we're actually acknowledging what staff is putting forward. I also want to say, if the community is not interested in this, our job as representatives is to reflect that perspective. We have folks on D Street down here that are begging for traffic calming. They're saying the cars are going too fast, and they're telling us to come in and chop things up and reduce some lanes. And we're seeing the opposite in the hills. And I think we do need to be receptive and responsive to that. There's a lot of traffic calming work we can do around the city and neighborhoods that actually want those changes. And so similar to folks saying, let's not continue to pour money into a project that folks don't support, I don't want us to dedicate staff time into a project that the neighborhood is necessarily unsupportive of. I strongly believe that we have to make the pedestrian improvements. If we're going to spend time doing capital improvements up in Hayward Boulevard, it needs to be for the pedestrian improvements. Growing up there, commuting on Hayward Boulevard from, what is it, Campus all the way to Dobble, you shown in the presentation that there are students crossing all the time and putting themselves in danger. My sister's ex-boyfriend had his car totaled trying to make a turn on there. I mean, it's incredibly dangerous, and cars go incredibly fast. The compromise that I'm seeing here and that I want to put forward is really, it sounds like the message is clear, let's leave the hill alone. But that line between Campus and Dobble, where there's a plaza as well, which is an attraction for future students that want to go and get pizza after school, or maybe even ride their bike or electric scooter, which is an increasingly popular means of transportation. We know that there's going to be a school there. We know it's going to impact traffic. But we also know we're trying to give away 2,000 bicycles to students, and we know that we need to make it safe for them to be able to travel to school, to those amenities, and back, so that their parents can pick them up safely, so they can get home. So what I'm hoping we can maybe find as a path forward here is a way of improving street safety, particularly between Campus and Dobble. And, you know, listen to our residents here, and maybe leave the rest of the hills alone for a little bit outside of the pedestrian improvements. I really like the idea of speed limiter cameras, and that's what they're called, those speeding cameras that you put up. They're different than red light cameras, but if someone's going too fast, they automatically can ticket somebody. I, I know I've talked to you about this before, Director Mary. I know there's a pilot program happening. But is there any way we could accelerate acquiring those cameras so we don't have to spend, you know, personnel costs or increase personnel costs to reduce speeding?
I can speak to that, thanks, Councilmember. So there's a statewide pilot. Five cities are allowed to do, to install speed cameras. One city to date has, and that's San Francisco. None of the other four have even started down the pilot. It would take state law changes to enable any other city to be able to do that. That being said, many other states do allow it, and it is widely used elsewhere. But in California, we, we are not able to.
Okay, maybe we put it on note to our state legislators that this is something we want them to prioritize, because we see a lot of messages around people wanting red light cameras, for example. And for the record, if folks don't know, we used to have them, and people started getting rear-ended like crazy. 85% of the tickets were invalidated because most of them were right turns anyways. And we were wasting two officers' worth of time reviewing all the video footage. So that's why back in, I think, 2014 or so, we moved away from it. But speed limiter cameras, in the studies I've seen, have been very successful. I wouldn't be opposed to that as one of the methods we use, once it's legal for our cities to be able to acquire them. So I think just to summarize my, my response here, you know, let's, let's not do work where it's not necessarily wanted here. I stand strong in wanting to protect incoming students from Campus to Dobble, but everything else beyond that I think we've heard loud and clear, folks are very concerned about. I want folks to rest assured that between Campus and Dobble, there's still room for emergency lanes, if I'm not mistaken, to be used in case of the need of evacuation. Is that right?
You're presuming that we would sort of implement the staff recommendation in that portion?
Yeah, including the pedestrian improvements.
Yeah.
And there would still be a central metal, middle yellow lane as well for left and right turns?
Yeah, generally speaking, there are areas with central middle lane. In that segment, I just want to make sure this is perfectly clear. There is a part of that, there's a physical median, right? And in that portion, the one thing you couldn't have is four lanes and bike lanes, right? So you, you could have two lanes and bike lanes. There's a portion where it's wide enough for four, but it's, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to do like a consistent four lanes and bike lanes, or even three lanes and bike lanes, because the median sort of makes that impossible. So I want to make sure you're real clear on that.
Okay. And I think also by focusing in on a specific part of this project, rather than this long stretch of road, we can begin to actually take a look at and have a more focused and productive conversation around what those changes might look like as we move forward. And I, I think the last note I want to make here is, you know, harder road is also a massive potential release valve. I know that it funnels into Cal State East Bay, and that ends up being university property. But given that we're looking at, you know, potentially adding lighting or a pedestrian crossing there, is there an opportunity to make that into a stoplight and have harder road funnel into, maybe, is it Parkside Camera, the exact street that goes there? But is there a way for us to work with the university to open that up as a release valve for additional traffic, that harder road passageway?
So what I would say about that is that, my understanding is that the university has looked at that as a concept. It might be a little bit, be careful what you wish for on something like that. There is already, we did a little bit of looking. There's already probably about 1,000 of the vehicles a day that use Hayward Boulevard now are in fact through vehicles. So they're coming from quite far away, and they're using that to get down to Mission as one of them anyways. People try to get through Hayward, you know, on our, on our streets. And if you make that connection that much easier, you might see that much more use of the street to kind of, as people see it as another way to kind of avoid using some of the major arterials in the city. So that, so there's a potential risk there that I think you'd want to be, be careful to think about.
Okay, just trying to think outside of the box. If we wanted to move in that direction, how difficult or easy would it be to work with the university to do so?
I'm not sure I'm best placed to answer that, that part of the question.
Do you have an idea? I saw you turn the mic on.
We can approach them and see if we can start the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate your work and the continued receptiveness to community feedback. And I know it might feel a little disappointing to pull the brakes or slow on certain parts of it. But I just think that if our larger goal is to improve street safety across the entire city, we don't, we do ourselves a disservice by making a, a portion of the city significantly, significantly upset at these kinds of changes. And I want to find the right, the right balance of improvement at the right pace and at the right time. Thanks.
Thank you for bringing more clarity to that. I, and I had not thought about, you know, treating the lower part, leaving the upper part alone. So thank you for, for clarifying that. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you. And thank you for the report. This conversation has been going on for a while, and it's, I, I have to admit, I'm a little humored by Councilmember Cyrep's comment about pumping the brakes on traffic calming. But, but I do think it might be appropriate for us to take, take a breather. And, and I think the mayor was asking for some more time to consider some things back in the Infrastructure Committee. And here, here's why I'm in favor of that idea. So I've been involved in the disaster response community for about 15, 16 years now. And one, one of the things that comes up very frequently is one of the things that comes up very frequently is, is what happens with the roadways when there's a disaster? Whether it's a shooting, or fire, or, you know, some other disaster, mudslides and so forth. Well, if it's daytime and kids are in schools, one of the very first things that happens is the parents all jump in their cars and rush to the school. And that is not always a desirable thing, but that is reality. They go there. In addition to that, we've got teachers and staff and so forth, who, while they are concerned about making sure the kids get connected with their parents and they leave, they're also concerned about getting out of Dodge. And so, when people are coming up the road and some people are coming down the road for the evacuation, oftentimes what happens is some jams, and people needing to make right turns when other people are trying to make a left turn, and it does kind of turn into a chaotic situation. Add to that, you've got trucks, buses, whatever, that are going up and down. Add to that level of panic, what do drivers do when they're panicked? They don't stay in the lines. And if you look at any of the video footage from the LA fires, and there are many, many examples of this, but just using the, you know, the most recent LA fire example, you can see where people, for whatever reason, they were not just going down the one lane that they had available, but they also started going down the other lane. Then something happened. Don't know what it was. Don't know if it was, you know, a fire breach of the road, or whatever the deal was, but that kind of came to a halt. And so what happened was, is the fire vehicles couldn't make it up the road, they had to bring in bulldozers. And, you know, I just think we need to study this, I think we need to look at this a little bit more. And maybe on top of that, we also need to converse with our community a little bit more. Whatever we find out that is going to enable them to respond appropriately during a disaster, and also understand that we have thought this through, and this is what we think is going to be the ideal situation, how, given reality, how people are going to react, but also how we're going to be able to implement not only traffic calming, traffic safety right now, but into the future as potentially more students. And we're not just talking about these two schools, we're also talking about Cal State, right? So, and residents, a lot of people who work from home, and a lot of people who were retired at the top of the hill, and maybe, you know, in some of these disasters that I've studied, people don't actually get the word that they need to evacuate. And the ones that do get the word keep thinking, "Oh, well, I'll just put it off a little bit longer." And, you know, they don't stock up the goodies that they need to take with them until someone is literally shouting at them, "You need to evacuate now." And so, I think a little bit of training to our community in terms of when to respond. So if we say, "It's suggested that you leave now," that's really ought to be the time they ought to be hearing a shouting, right? That that's not the time to think about planning to get going out of town. That's the time to pack up your stuff and leave, especially if you're talking about large families with young kids, or the elderly, or they've got animals, especially elderly animals. I mean, reality sets in, and then people wait too long, and then panic sets in. And that is a recipe for disaster I'd really rather not see here. I like the idea of the speed limiter cameras, though. You know what? If there were more of those, I might be the unwilling recipient of some of those tickets. But, you know, frankly, I think, you know, in the neighborhood where I live, I actually did some studies of how the traffic was going, not in the house I'm in now, but when I lived down the hill. And what I found was, residents in that community of 323 homes, residents in that community were usually the responsible parties that were speeding. So 25 mile-an-hour zone with a curve and a park right there in that vicinity, and people were driving 50, 60 miles an hour. And so I took the time to do a study, I did videos, I, you know, measured it and all of that stuff. And so, people, I think, need to be educated about why it's important that they observe the law, that this is going to impact everybody's safety, but we also need to carry this conversation forward. So, speed limiter cameras, getting back to that, I like that idea. And I think, if nothing else, we really ought to talk to the university about opening up harder road as an evacuation path. So not necessarily through traffic all the time, which could be, you know, complicated for them and maybe undesirable for other reasons, but if we need it as an evacuation route, you know, just getting them to open, I think there's a gate up there that they can open, right? And so, I don't know if that's in our plans already, but I would strongly suggest that we make that part of our plan. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Roach.
Thank you. Yes, I know we've been looking at this for a while, although I think, you know, we've all heard that while we remember, it went back to, was it 2021? I think to the community, this is a new issue, and we can hear from the callers, a lot of people have really just started focusing on it as we've gone back to the community. I do feel the community's frustration, because, you know, knowing that the strong majority of the feedback opposes these changes, but everyone seems to agree on pedestrian safety measures, you know, speed-limiting measures, that there was no option, because the only option that includes the four lanes, keeping the four lanes, is just keep it the way it is. And I don't think that's what the community's saying. They're saying, "Keep the lanes the way they are, but yes, please talk to us about pedestrian safety measures." And I think everyone is talking about that, whether that's stop signs, or, you know, ball bats to get crosswalks closer together so they're not going as far. So I think, you know, that there was no option that included four lanes plus these options. Yeah, please.
And I apologize if that was unclear, the, it's really just they're on two separate paths, right? There's what we do with restriping as part of repaving, and then there's the pedestrian safety, and we intend to move the pedestrian safety elements forward regardless of whatever option happens for restriping, so we definitely want to move that forward. There are considerations there, which is that, you know, having sort of flashing beacons on a four-lane road is less effective than on a two-lane road, and we want to be thoughtful about that, but that's something we can look at in design. But that, it just needs more time, because we've got to get a consultant on to do the design work and so forth and so on. So it's not that we wouldn't do it, it's that it's just on a separate path.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because when you look at the four options, it was sort of like this throwaway, or keep it the way it is, right? It kind of looks that way. And I think I'm sort of feeling some feedback on that point. And I know we're trying to capitalize on the restriping, so I get that's why we're doing this right now, because that's going to be a cost if we're going to make these changes. This is the time to do it. I mean, I'm hearing loud and clear that, I mean, I think to Councilmember Cyrep's point, you know, if the community doesn't want here, and there are other areas in the community that would like to capitalize on that kind of traffic calming and lane narrowing, like maybe this is the time to say, "Just stop on this process, start a study, and, you know, get some pedestrian safety measures in place for this area." Because I agree, we all agree, we don't want to see a single more accident up there, and I would be really upset if we decided to, you know, keep four lanes with no additional safety measures, and something did happen again, and we could have done something about it. I mean, I think that weighs heavily on all of us, right? That we're all sort of decision-makers, we're experts in this, studying this. And so, I feel that pressure, but I also am really concerned. I mean, I think these concerns of evacuation are not just that we all saw on the news what happened in Southern California, but, you know, later tonight, we're talking about the maps, the higher fire danger maps, and the hills are even in higher fire danger. So they're real concerns, I think, for people. How do we get everyone out of there quickly? And I hear you with, you know, providing, you know, bike lanes that are accessible and all that, but I don't think it's enough to sort of quell those fears, and I just know, I don't live up there, but if I lived up there, I think these would be very serious concerns for me. So I just feel, I feel compelled to respond to that concern to the community and understand it, you know. And I know, I think, Director Mary, you commented on, you know, one of our concerns in the city is having these complete streets that allows for, you know, bike lanes and, you know, everyone to use the streets the way they need to for accessibility. But I don't know, I mean, I'm really strongly here in the community that I don't know that this is the area where we need, you know, two big bike lanes on either side. It is a really steep area. I don't think this is an area where you're going to see lots of families biking along with their kids, you know, beyond the odd hardcore biker. So I'm not sure, like, I don't feel compelled to sort of answer to that. I agree around the student area, I mean, in looking at pedestrian safety, I do want to see what we can do to get students across faster, get them over to the shopping centers so that they can get pizza and get coffee, and make that a safer area for everyone. So I think, I am very interested in the pedestrian safety work, but based on everything I've heard, I would like, I mean, my, I don't even think we need to study that part anymore. I think we should just pause on the four-lane issue, you know, keep the, stripe it the way it is, and work quickly and hard on the pedestrian safety measure. So that's where I'm standing right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel similar to my colleagues. You know, I appreciate the intent behind us needing to do this work and, you know, us needing to slow down traffic, as well as, you know, deal with, you know, improving pedestrian safety. And when I was looking at kind of these four options, it says in the staff report that, you know, option four doesn't allow, you know, doesn't really meet any of the objectives of our strategic plan. So when we think about this continued implementation of major corridor traffic calming, this would not do that if we chose option one, two, or three. And I do think that we're hearing that we need to do something to calm traffic up there, because the speed in which cars travel is unsafe and it's not sustainable. But I'm just wondering how we can come together with the community to think just a little bit more creatively on what those solutions might be. I know that maybe the camera's not the right thing, but, you know, is there an option to partner with PD if we know that this is a high-speed zone, to see if we can get some motorcycle cops up there a couple of days a week to, you know, deal with mitigating the speeds up there? But I think it's hard for me to, you know, lean into a project when nine out of 10 community members are saying there's something wrong here, right? I mean, even if my hunch said to go with this because, you know, we need to do whatever we need to do to calm down our streets, when nine out of 10 people are telling me, "Ray, you might want to rethink that," it does give me pause and say, "Let's come together and think about what other options might we be able to come to that would still give us, you know, bike lanes?" Because I went to Cal State Hayward, and, when it was called Hayward, and I can appreciate how much vibrancy could be in that area if it's activated, right? If there are people biking up there, if there are protected bike lanes, that could be a real, you know, kind of activated corridor within our community, but we have to find a way to activate it in a way that's safe. But I also know that there's been a ton of hard work that's went into this from staff's perspective. So I don't want to throw away any of the hard work that's went into it, I just want to build on this work to make sure that whatever we end up moving forward with, it's something that not only the council can get behind, but the community that's ultimately being served by, you know, these changes can get behind it, too. So those are my comments on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
I'll be brief, and a lot of my comments were made in committee, and a lot of my colleagues echoed my comments then. Just wanted to acknowledge the hard work staff would have done in response to the committee comments. One of the things that they did was go out into the community, get solicit more feedback, slow down a bit, and they did go to Cal State East Bay to get that feedback, so I really appreciate that. I know I also did mention Stonebri, and in terms of being an actual location to solicit feedback, but I think the caller made a good comment of actually asking Stonebri what they thought. So definitely look forward to hearing more conversations with them if this comes back up in the future. Also, want to also echo some of the comments I made in committee about the retail center and making sure we're soliciting feedback from the retail center as well. I do feel that we should figure out how to make that retail center more successful. We are seeing vacancies there, and it's partly due to the issues of pedestrian safety. So I know we talked a lot about Cal State East Bay, but we also have other stakeholders there that are impacted by these changes and could support pedestrian safety near that retail center. Also, I'm interested in hearing in the future about the residents in the townhomes. I didn't, I know we heard a lot from the homes in the hills, but there are a lot of residents who live in the townhomes in the most, probably the most dangerous part of that area, and I didn't see a lot of feedback from them. So just wondering about outreach there. But I do feel that, again, I've said this for other projects, focusing on intersections is really what I would like to see in a lot of these projects, because we can spend all this money doing the whole lanes, but most of the conflicts are happening at the intersections where it's Mission and Hayward, or Carlsby, or is it near the shopping center? And unfortunately, we did have a death there, so we do need to prioritize something there immediately. But again, I thank you for all your hard work. I know this was not an easy project to even discuss, and I want to thank the residents for calling in and coming out, giving your comments, not just tonight, but also at the committees, also at Cal State East Bay as well. I know that you all are a highly engaged group, and I think you all did it in a very respectful way. And hopefully you all can understand the reasoning why we even had to approach this topic was for pedestrian safety for the residents who have to walk to their locations in the hills as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to summarize a couple of points that I heard that are, that I thought were very good. One, Councilmember Andrews, focusing on intersections. I think you're absolutely right, and I think that gets to where Councilmember Cyrep was talking about, because the intersections happen to be in the places where you see a lot more traffic, or, or I should say, not more traffic, but where you see more of the traffic, where you'll have bicycles, pedestrian, and traffic, and vehicles. But you are absolutely right. This is a topic that is probably not over, and we will certainly be seeing it more in infrastructure and airport community.
Mr. Mayor.
Our acting city manager has raised his hand. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Although this is a work session, I believe that this is time-sensitive because of the pavement schedule for the summer. Am I hearing that there is a preference for option three?
Option four, basically.
Option four?
Which is go back to the way things are today.
Can you address safety improvements?
Yes, I can.
Please.
Yes, we can, separately, yes. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a minute and say that tonight is Hugh's last meeting with us, last week with the city. He's going back to join private sector, and I just want to say how much I'm going to miss him. He was such a strong partner with us in transportation, revived everything for us. I'm going to miss him, but hopefully we can cooperate and work together in his new capacity somewhere, somehow. So, thank you, Hugh, for everything.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and it was always good to have you accompany me over at the ACTC, and your work on the bicycle program, the youth commission loved you. So, thank you for all of your work with us. I know you were here briefly, but your tenure, no doubt, has made an impact, but you've also gained a lot of friends on the youth commission. You are the coolest transportation engineer around, so thank you very much, Hugh, for everything you've done for us. I really appreciate it. Thank you. And, you know, and we sent you off with a very complex issue, of course.
It's my favorite kind.
Thank you. And be well. Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, Director Mary, were you being asked to maybe speak to some of the safety improvements that would come with option four, or are there no improvements that are coming?
So option four is going to proceed, because we have to do the paving and restriping, but we are going to hire consultants to design those safety improvements and subsequently implement them.
Subsequent, sorry?
Subsequent to any paving or any striping that we are going to do as part of the paving project that is ahead of us.
Okay. And I'm hearing, what are those subsequent projects?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I think, so essentially, we're talking about the enhanced pedestrian crossings would be done later. There are a couple small-scale striping things that could be built into this plan, like some of the stuff I showed you about, some of the downhill, you know, kind of speed-reduction markings. So those are, those are very minor, I would say, like, I don't expect a ton from them, but those we would do anyway. So there's some small-scale things we can absolutely do.
Okay. And I guess the only comment I would want to make is I, you know, I would like to see there be an improvement between, I mean, maybe it's not as pressing, because Bret Hart isn't going to be built there for another two years, so it's, you know, it's fine. But, you know, that section, like I was mentioning, between campus and Dobell is very important to me. I think we can start with the pedestrian improvements, because those are needed immediately, and then we can have a conversation around what potential safety improvements can look like in the future. I'd also say, in the same way we did the campus drive traffic calming pilot before installing more permanent bollards, that kind of framing, I think, is really important for the community, too. I think it makes it a lot more of a collaborative process going forward. If it... it makes it a lot more of a collaborative process going forward. If we're saying, look, we're going to pilot this part, see how it works, make a commitment to the community to say, does this work, does it not, similar to what we did with Orchard. I think the way this has been presented over the course of the years is this massive change is coming, and you're kind of powerless to stop it. But I hope the community sees that we're being responsive tonight. And in the future, I hope you are a partner in piloting with us some of the changes that we're hoping to make, because we're not up here trying to make up reasons to make you get upset and come down to City Hall. We're really trying to make sure we're looking out for the safety of the entire community. Thanks.
Councilmember Roach.
Thanks, yeah. So, so I'm hearing that the striping will happen first, maybe it's some minor, you know, sort of markings, but the pedestrian safety measures might take longer, because we have to get a consultant to come up with the ideas. But is there something we can do, I mean, just to, I think it was Valda's point about, you know, the speed, you know, not, not the high-tech things we're talking about, but, I mean, you know, those old-fashioned speed ones, where it shows your speed, and then...
Sure, yeah. We could, we could install speed feedback signs that at least tell you how fast you're going.
I mean, I mean, something immediately, right? So, we're doing it along with the striping, like, you know, you know, something.
I would say, like, you already approved a contract for the stripe at the paving and all that, so maybe not exactly along, but very close behind.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. So, my, my last question is, so if we're going with option four, it's going to be some striping that's going to do the speed reduction stuff. Anything, are we going to get anything at the intersections to Councilmember Andrews' point, like one or two of the intersections up there? Because, I mean, there's a lot of great work in what's been proposed, and to kind of just set all of that aside, I'm not sure that I totally agree with that, but what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, are we going to get any bike lanes out of this? Is there going to be anything that's done at the intersections? I get the whole repaving and the kind of the time sensitivity around that, but kind of the broader, you know, pedestrian safety tra, I mean, I guess we're not doing much with traffic calming, but whatever we can do, I, I still want to see what we can do.
Let us go back and take a look and see what we can implement as part of the paving and restriping that is ahead.
Thank you so much.
And Director Ameri, thank you for your patience. And, and Hugh, hang out a bit. We've still got some more questions. No, I'm kidding. We bid you well. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I would like to close this item, move on to our public hearing. That is, that has been continued. Next is our legislative business, which I have been promised by our acting fire chief that this will be a very high-level, precise presentation. Legislative business, item 10, LB25-017, local responsibility, area fire hazard severity zone, let me say it again, local responsibility, local responsibility area fire hazard severity zone map, introduction of an ordinance amending the Hayward municipal by adding Article 16 to Chapter 3 of the Hayward Municipal Code relating to fire hazard severity zones. And I am seeing Captain Hamery up in front of us. I apologize. Go right ahead.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, just a little bit of history, after the tunnel fire in Berkeley Hills, the state of California started measuring the hazard zones. Recently, they passed a bill that said we're going to start to identify not just the very hazard zones in the local response area or the LRA, we're going to identify the high hazard and the moderate hazard. So, this year in February, they rolled out a new map. With that new map, we can actually go to the next slide. They basically started a time clock of 30 days of posting it, soliciting comment from the community, and then really have two options as far as a local area is either adopt it as they put it out there, or you can advocate to increasing the fire hazard to higher than what they put. For some background, there's a difference between the hazard map and the risk assessment maps that the insurance companies use. The hazard map, all it's saying is that on this piece of dirt where these fuels exist, and the topography or the lay of the land, and the wind, and the, you know, the col, the climate that is in that area, which would be the Hayward Hills, here are some areas that fire can exist in a 30-to-50-year period. It doesn't go into any of the risk management that's been done by the community, or the homes, or the fire department, so it is not used by the insurance industry. They're using very up-to-date, you know, if there's a fuel mitigation project, or if the homeowner has done a lot of home hardening or defensible space, it changes the risk profile in that community. This is a, kind of just like last time, it's been a long time since they updated their maps, it'll be like this. It is not tied to insurance. With that, the changes you can see, and any homeowner in Hayward can go log on and see where their home's at, it's mainly the areas that we've kind of already known, where it's the foothills that we know so well, it's the east of Mission, south of D, have a higher risk than our flats. So, if today, basically, the option is to either adopt it, and that would be the recommendation of staff, and use it as a data point, but it's just one data point, there's a lot of other ways to measure the risk that exists in our community.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you. I will first come to Mayor Protam Roach.
Thank you for that. I just want to be clear, so there's nothing we can do to sort of approve or, I mean, we have to accept them up the way they are right there from Cal Fire. It's not like we can change them.
Yeah, the only option would be to, to advocate for increasing the risk. The recommendation from staff is not to, because they're basing their risk on a fuel-based, topography-based model. To do it without modeling, I don't know that that would, that would not be our recommendation.
Okay, okay. And then, so, you know, I, I thought that was the case, but I was wondering, so what are, you know, based on this, and if people are concerned, maybe they're in a higher fire danger area than they were before on the map, what are we doing as far as, you know, fire safety education, evacuation, root education, you know, keeping your area clean, clear for fire, minimize fire danger?
Yeah, so, right now, and really, most of the day today was spent with our crews. We're getting ready to go out and do the home inspections. It's, we're in that cycle of kind of spinning up for fire season. We're still, so there'll be annual inspections for everyone that's in the, in the fire hazard areas, that east of Mission, south of D. We're also continuing to work with our chipping program, our wood abatement program, looking for projects to where we can do vegetation management to reduce risk for communities. Honestly, at the administration standpoint, the majority of our time right now is learning from what's been happening over the last, you know, really, 2017 started a significant uptick in California of very intense fires. With that, there's some lessons that are coming out of Maui, Palisades, Eaton campfire. So, we're trying to figure out how we leverage those lessons learned, which, to be honest, we do have a lot of agency as a community. The volume, the biggest area you can have an impact is your own home. And if we get communities to make a home hardening, invest in, you know, making their home resistant to ember cast and resistant to fire, and not only protects your home, but your neighbor's home. And that's really what you're seeing out of Eaton and Palisades, is how close homes are together is the biggest problem. And that's what we're trying to do. So, our, to your question, the main thing we're trying to do is educate.
Yeah, and, and I've seen your posts on social media, and I try, and I think we all try to share them when that happens, because I know you're trying to get the word out. Are you, do we still use goats for vegetation?
We still have a goat management, one project scheduled this year. The challenge for investing heavily into vegetation management is you kind of bought into that, and it's, it requires consistent maintenance. There's a neighboring agency that invested heavily in this like five years ago. They were doing a lot of controlled burns, a lot of vegetation management. In the end, the real community risk reduction is done at the home.
Okay.
Is, is making the homes resistant to ember cast.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. Just kind of going back to Councilmember Roach's point, can, can we kind of do something a little bit even more proactively around, you know, informing people around this? Like, you know, not in a scary way, but just to say, like, with your water bill, right? Like, hey, these new maps have come out, here's maybe three steps that you can take, you know? I'm just trying to think about, because like, to your point, it really is, you know, the homeowner, that's the best defense here. And I know that we're doing all of these things that you were just discussing, but I'm really wondering how we make the homeowner kind of their own cavalry for, you know, for mitigation, for preparedness, and for readiness, because, you know, we can do a whole bunch of stuff to mitigate, but eventually, one day, there's going to be an earthquake, or there's going to be a fire, and people are going to have to be ready. So, I guess, how can we even be more proactive in these particular areas if we know the fire risk is higher there?
Yeah, I, I think the last six months or so, we've been really kind of measuring that exact question. How are we more effective with building that collaboration? A lot of that's the messaging. Staff, staff recently had a resident engagement survey, and the number one way that can, our residents are now getting their information is through social media. It passed up local news. So, for us, we're very aware of that. We're also very aware of the time of year that they're paying attention to our social media, and January was our largest spike. So, people were listening in January. Good lesson for us is when these things happen is really pushing out that message, because you have a captive audience. Throughout fire season is typically, people are paying more attention, and we have an audience as well. So, we do have a messaging plan as far as communication of how to get out the message for what we want, you know, to build that community resiliency, which is knowing your zones, what you can do for home hardening. But also, we already had a lot of discussion today about evacuation zones, and making sure that our community is well-educated on how to evacuate, how to prepare for it, how to be ready to go.
Makes a lot of sense, and thank you for that. And then, I also think that there's sort of a nexus to this work, and maybe, like, you know, the vulnerable needs registry that we were talking about before, some sort of collaboration there, because I know a number of people who live in the hills, and they're not mobile, right? So, it would be very hard for them to try to self-evacuate. So, just kind of thinking through, if, if we know that this is a high-risk area, who are the most vulnerable there? How do we make sure that we either provide them services to somehow get in front of the mitigation, or how do we make sure that we prioritize our response to them when, you know, the time does come, are just some things that come to mind on this item? But thank you so much for bringing this forward tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you for your presentation. Wanted to know if you also connected with the schools in the area regarding the, the hazard maps, or will you be connecting with the schools?
We did not have any direct question, contact with the schools.
Okay. I would just give them a heads-up on this map as well, and then wanted to also know if we were partnering or give Hard a heads-up, because I know they actually manage cleaning of Stonebray, even though that's, that's, you know, a separate entity from Stonebray. So, you might want to talk to them as well. And then, I wanted to also know if we have looked at the landscaping programs at BASCA, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, has been educating the community. I know they have drought-tolerant classes, but I know that can be kind of mixed messaging when it comes to landscaping, but then we're also trying to create defensible space, and then we also have a defensible space class. So, just wanted to make sure that we're, are we coordinated on what we're recommending to the community for their, their homes?
Yeah, I think when you look at what the insurance community is recommending, and what we're, a lot of the studies are coming out, it is a change to homeowners' landscape and what we've all gotten used to seeing.
Yeah.
So, providing options that are viable, that are, you know, maintain an appearance that, you know, our residents would want to have, because it's different. You know, hardscape five feet from out from your house, most of our houses don't look like that.
Right.
So, that's a change.
Right.
But the evidence does show that if you do have something that will catch an ember cast and catch your fence on fire, that will transition to your attic, it's, it's a problem that we're seeing across the state.
Okay.
So, yeah, and education into options.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to BASCA about these maps to see what the, because the programs that are through BASCA are not, it's, they're contracted out, so they're basically drought-tolerant courses that are taught across different jurisdictions. It could be even out of state. I'm, I'm just a little nervous that we, we are telling them, hey, install lavender, because it's drought-resistant, but we don't want necessarily lavender right next to your house. You, we actually want, you know, decomposed granite. So, I think we just probably want to seek up to see what, what materials are best suited for, for these areas. And I'm more than happy to, to assist in messaging to the general manager or CEO there. And then, also, yes, good to hear about the chipping and abatement program, and I think also when we give away the free mulch, because I know a lot of residents partake in that, maybe that's also a, a good way to educate the community when they are getting that mulch. Give them a little flyer or QR code, so they'll have some, some updates there. But that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, their menu.
I actually have a comment, not a question.
We'll wait on your comment. Councilmember Roach.
Just, it was sort of curiosity, because we're talking about some of this. You know, one thing I learned, I think, during the Palisades fire was that it was, or maybe even you talked about it, was that a fence, you know, our fences all go up to our houses because we want security, and that's one of the biggest ways that fire will come into your house, right? Because like, the neighbor's fire, house might burn, and get their fence on fire, and then it goes to your house. So, what's the recommendation around safety and security for your home while not having a fence up next to your house? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I think, I look a lot at where the insurance industry's going.
Yeah, yeah.
Quite frankly, because they have the money to do all the experimentation. They're literally building houses, and then they're building machines to throw ember cast at houses and seeing what works and what doesn't. And I, and I think there is a future figuring out how we adapt from a, you know, a consistent culture of wood fences up to our houses. What you were seeing in Palisades, and you had actually fire companies that were cutting and making a break while they were fighting the fire to eliminate that. But how do you transition? What's your other option? You know, when you see some of the options that are out there, that they're not as aesthetically pleasing. However, more and more stuff is coming onto the market to make a non-combustible fence
Okay.
next to your house.
Okay. Thanks, just curious, yeah.
Yeah, there's options coming.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. City of Hayward still has a CERT program, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, great. Because one of the things that I'm aware of is the folks that take the time to go through that training often then carry that message to their local neighborhoods. So, you might get, how many people typically are in a class, do you know? 20, 30, 50?
There's been a, a rise in our participation. I'd have to talk to our public information officers, see where they're at right now.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off-guard there, but I think when I took that class about 15 or 16 years ago, I think there was maybe somewhere around 20 people. But each of those 20 people came from different neighborhoods. And so, they'd go talk to their neighbors about the program, the CERT program itself, but then also how to stay safe. And, and part of my role as, as the emergency communications mutual aid coordinator for Region 2 is reaching out to those CERT teams and integrating them with the other radio operators, so that they have a way to have two-way communication down to the neighborhoods. And I see an opportunity for us to collaborate and help spread the word about how we can do a better job on when emergencies happen, how to evacuate. So, anyway, I hope we get a chance to talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, I will move on to public comment on this item. I don't have any cards, I don't see any calls, so I will close public comment, and I will return to the day as to entertain a motion.
I'm happy to move the item.
A second.
I have a comment.
Moved by Councilmember Bonilla, seconded by Councilmember Andrews, and Councilmember Syrup has a comment.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this report forward tonight. I think most of my questions were asked by my colleagues already. I wanted to reiterate the idea around, you know, how we're getting the word out around fire hardening and maybe piggybacking off of CERT. And also, having the council consider, maybe this is one of our metrics for the fire department moving forward, is what number of Hayward residents' homes are being hardened per year? And how do we align with the fire department in the CERT program or our communications department to message that, where, you know, if the, I'm just spitballing here, but the Hayward Fire Department website says, here are steps to harden your home, shoot us a photo of your hardened home, hashtag Hayward Hardened, I don't know, you know, just like, how do we get residents to let the fire department know, like, we're good to go, and feel like they can be leaders in their own neighborhoods and helping their other neighbors harden their own homes? Maybe it is our CERT team that's leading that process, but how do we cultivate a community-led effort and also track that effort as a city, so we know that our residents are not only prepared for a fire, but also prepared with evacuation understandings? And what does that preparation program look like, and how do we minimize the load on our, our fire staff in achieving that by activating our community? So, I really want to take this information and find a way to apply it into true readiness on a, on a community level, where, you know, our fire department's going to be everywhere in the case of a large fire. How do we make sure our community members are able to take care of each other? So, just some creative thinking around that. But overall, you know, I'm very supportive of this. Thank you for bringing this information forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Just once again, thank you for your presentation, and also recommend you connect with the Clean and Green Commission, just because they do go out in the community and give a lot of good information, particularly about landscaping. So, they're going to have to be educated on these transitions. And then, whatever we learn about how to prepare for, for fire safety here is to see if we can actually apply this also for earthquakes, to see, we can make sure that whatever communication or social media to see if we can make sure that whatever communication, or social media, whatever lessons learned, we're hearing, we do the same for earthquake preparation. And I know that the community is really concerned about fire right now, because that's on the top of brain. But we are Hayward, City of Hayward, and we do have a fault, called Hayward Fault. So just want to make sure that we are prepared for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zerminho.
Thank you. But that fault is not our fault. All right, at least, that's what I heard. All right. Thank you very much for doing this. And actually, the presentation is very good. I'm glad that we're being active, or even proactive, reactive on it. But I think it's very important for the safety of all our residents. And thank you for actually cleaning around the area of the Hayward H, up on the hills, by our old eleven-story building. That's tremendous, because that could be a fire range, have fire danger with the apartment next door. So you used to as a training exercise for your firefighters, and we appreciate that. So thank you, and be safe out there, both of you and the rest of the gang.
Mayor Pro Tim Roach.
One more. I haven't made a comment yet. I just asked questions. Yeah, yeah, have I? Anyway, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to piggyback on Councilmember Andrews' comment about the schools, because so often, messages like this come from kids, you know, like about some, if there was a delivery, and some cute way to sort of, you know, get home to their parents and say, what are we doing about, you know, about our hardening? And I just think there could be a cute way to deliver that that would get them engaged, and therefore get their parents engaged. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, before we go to vote, I wanted to apologize, I think I said Captain Hamrin, but you're actually Deputy Chief Hamrin. So my apologies, sir.
No worries.
Okay. And if there are no other questions or comments, Madam City Clerk, we can take the roll.
Right, Mayor. If you want to refresh your iPads, please.
Oh, yes, of course. I felt Geraldine looking at us. And it works. And the item passes seven zero, so thank you. Okay. Next, we have council reports and announcements. Any council reports or announcements? See none. Actually, I do have one, just one quick announcement. Next week, I will not be here. I will be in Washington, DC, with a delegation from the Alameda County Transportation Commission. We will be at the Capitol lobbying the transportation department for, and our Director of Public Works will be happy to hear this. We will be lobbying for transportation dollars for the Bay Area, particularly Alameda County. But you will be pleased to know that I have been appointed by the group to be the expert in rails, in rail. So I have been, I have been reading up on trains, trains, and more trains, and particularly the corridor, along Alameda County Corridor with, on rail. So if you have any insight on rail, feel free to call me. But, but I am not leaving all of, everyone unattended, because Mayor Pro Tim Roach will be running the meeting very capably. And so be nice to her. Always. With that, next is moving on to council referral. We have no council referrals. And I did have two items for adjournment today. One item is, we have suffered the loss of two incredible community members in the City of Hayward. One is Jeff Galati, and the other one is Mr. Ed Boge. And many of us knew Mr. Galati. And, and of course, I know staff, particularly our Acting City Manager, knew Ed Boge too, and his mom, Diane Boge. But I wanted to ask Councilmember Zerminho if he wanted to make some words for both Mr. Boge and Mr. Galati.
I thank you, Mayor. It is, as you stated, it is a big loss. Ed Boge actually was a resident representative to the Airport Commission in the City of Oakland, the Oakland Airport. And he'd been doing that for many, many years. He was very active, and that's how I met him, in the Greater Hayward Democratic Club, where he actually was president for a while. He was a welder, and he actually did some art pieces with his metal. Quiet, reserved, a slight sense of humor, and a very good man with a big, big heart. So I liked him a lot. And so he said, he made good double legs, along with his mother. And I loved him. And then Mr. Galati is, is something else, because he and I met in the street cleaning around Patrick Avenue and Huntwood. And I said, so what are you doing out here? Well, I'm cleaning my city. And what are you doing out here? So ever since then, that was maybe like eight years ago, we'd get together once in a while. He'd call me there, say, help me out with this big pile of litter, Francisco. Then I'm out there, and then I, we got together that way. He really wanted a clean city, especially his neighborhood, Huntwood, between Tenison and Harder Road. That was his baby. And he liked the fact that some of us, or many, he liked seeing people who actually walked the talk, people like Andrews, my colleague Andrews, my colleague Salinas, apparently, our mayor, Salinas. And he actually cleaned up together once in a while. So he liked that. Every one of us up here have come up and done what made Mr. Galati happy. So they will be missed. Que descansen en paz, los dos muchachos. Gracias.
Thank you. You know, Ed Boge, you cannot talk about Ed Boge and not talk about his mom, Diane. They were big supporters of public safety. They were big boosters of everything Hayward. They were active in the Neighborhood Watch Program. Diane and Ed, her son, were, they were active in the National Night Out. They were active in Neighborhood Alert. Every volunteer opportunity that, that was available with our police department, and with just emergency services in general, they were always the first ones to sign up. And, and they just, you know, just incredible volunteers for the City of Hayward. Ed, of course, was our rep to the, to the Airport Commission. He, I forget if it was actually the actual Airport Commission. I forget the, the actual title of the, of the committee that he was a part of. But the, but the reason why we designated him to be there is because he lived over there off of Caliroga, and it was in the flight path of the airport. And his area of, you know, of, of interest was airplane noise and, and pollution. And so he represented the neighborhood quite capably. He was, he always would tell us, you know, updates on the airport, and it just, just a wonderful, wonderful person, and a, and an active community member. And, you know, Mr. Galati, and I said Jeff earlier, it's Greg Galati. You know, Greg, I met Greg, it had to have been like in 2010, 11, in there, where he was, you know, picking up trash, and he had a small group of community members over at Glassbrook Elementary School. And I don't know if the K-Pay were Cleaning Green Task Force had been, I guess it had been created already. And he might have even had like, he might have been one of the original founders. I would stand corrected. But Greg had come up to me, and he was saying that the group in the neighborhood was sort of, was sort of dissipating, and he wanted to figure out how to get more people involved to clean the neighborhood. And the Kids Breakfast Club was at Glassbrook Elementary School. So I said, why don't we cook pancakes for the neighborhood, and then we can have, you know, the cleanup tied to the breakfast? And within the, within a month, I think, our first time we did it, we had the multipurpose room at Glassbrook Elementary School packed. And we had breakfast, and we went out and cleaned the neighborhood. And, and we did it for several years after that. And Greg, his work in the neighborhood, his work picking up trash, and just, just very neighborhood-focused, and making sure that, that Schaefer, that Schaefer Road, Huntwood, you know, that whole neighborhood, Tyrell, Mannan, all of that. His focus on making sure that was the cleanest part of the city was unparalleled. And, man, Greg was just an incredible, incredible volunteer, and a big booster to the, to the city. And I was absolutely shocked to hear of his passing. So I don't know if anyone else knew him, but God bless him. And I, and he was also, I think it was Santa Clara University. I think, I didn't even go to Santa Clara University. He was a big booster of Santa Clara University. And anyways, I want to end with, you know, this meeting is being adjourned tonight in the name of Edward Boge and Greg Galati, Acting City Manager Lawson. If we can reach out to his family and plant, and arrange having a tree planted, that would be wonderful. And with that said, God bless both of them. And meeting is adjourned.